Welcome to the Oregon Board of Education regular meeting of August 12, 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag in a moment of silence. Let's use the moment of silence tonight to ponder a great start to a good school year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call please, Mrs. White? Michael Shea?
Yes.
Jerry Eversman?
Here.
Carol Molnar?
Here.
Dan Savig?
Here.
Jeffrey Zawiski?
Here.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I will need a motion to adopt the agenda as rip with the addition of the addendum, three items on the consent agenda and items J and K under new business, which includes bus stops and CRA agreement. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Shea?
Yes.
Savig?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Public participation at meetings. Do we have any cards? I have none. Thank you. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on the district website. We'll move to item number seven, the treasures report. Actually, I believe it's number six, the treasures report.
The approval of amendments for the July 15, 2025, regular and August 4, 2025 special meeting. And then my treasure report and payment of bills. As you can see, we, I had a big advance for our first month of revenues. A lot of that is a timing issue. We received it earlier this year than we did last year. State funding is up for the first month, but we won't know how it's going to act until it's fully kicked in until November. That's when all the updates to the new, um, new funding will be. For the expenses, as you can see, the salaries and benefits are up. The first two months will look a bit up because August is a prepay month, so we won't be able to compare apples to apples until September when it's back to only being two paid for the month. So, um, but right now it is up a little bit for the expenses of nineteen point two eight percent. Um, a year ago, we had some technology and furniture purchases that we didn't have this year, and that's what's causing the equipment to appear lower than last year. The only other thing I'd like to talk to you folks about it, and I've also talked with Cajun and Jeff and Dr. Fritz, is possibly going to, um, a cash basis audit rather than a GAAP audit. It would, would save the district around $6,000 a year doing this. I've done that, the cash basis at Old Ford. Of course, we were smaller, but, um, the GAAP is done, like at bigger districts, um, but locally, there's not a lot of districts that do it. There's no districts in Ottawa County that do it. We would get a finding of noncompliance for not filing the GAAP. It could, at some point, negatively impact a future bond rating. However, Fort Clinton Schools, which is Jeff's, um, Jeff Dornbusch's school, they have a bond rating of a double A, and they don't do GAAP. If at some point in the future we would need to get a better bond rating, we could go back to it because you can, we can go back to it at any time. Another thing is we wouldn't achieve the, um, Auditor of State award, but to me, my award would be saving taxpayers $6,000 a year. It's just something I kind of wanted to talk to you guys about, see what, if you had any thoughts on it. Like I said, Cajun and Jeff and, and Dr. Fritz and I kind of talked about it and just thought we'd see what you guys thought.
I'd like to hold off on any decision on that till we can just have more discussion on it. I need to understand it a little bit more. I have worked for the Ottawa State Audit, did a lot of auditing of the local school districts, and I just want to understand the cash basis piece a little bit more.
That's all I have. Okay, we need a motion to accept the treasures report, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
And executive session will go off until the end of the meeting. We'll move on to the consent agenda, I pretend. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing, no, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Shea?
Yes.
Savig?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Under new business, college credit plus agreement, a motion is needed to approve college credit plus with the Lawrence College for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Copy of this agreement has been distributed to the board. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Eversman?
Yes.
Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item B, college credit plus agreement, a motion to approve CCP agreement with Owens Community College, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Copy of the agreement has been distributed to the board. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Eversman?
Yes.
Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item C, Midwest Regional Education Service Center Agreement. A motion is needed to approve an agreement with Midwest Regional Educational Service Center for the vision impaired services and/or orientation and mobility for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the amount of 1,168 dollars. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Shea?
Yes.
Savig?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item D, Northern Buckeye Nova Agreement. A motion is needed to approve the N, to approve the N D E C Nova Agreement with Northern Buckeye Education Council for fees associated with online courses for the Oregon Digital Academy. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item E, a request for quote, quotes for professional design services. A motion is needed to request for qualifications for professional design services in connection with renovation and expansion of high school engineering design and development classrooms and lab space. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
A quick question, tell.
Yes.
Can you give, like, your description of the scope of this, you know, what we're looking to do with the expansion?
Yeah, the good news in, in this would be that when we look at the cost, um, both the funding coming from the state, but also then we have a significant donation that's going to be made in an effort to complete this project. Ultimately, um, we're trying to renovate the engineering space, make it a little bit larger for the engineering classroom, but also that it will have the capabilities of doing some job training, uh, right there, kind of like the manufacturing side of what we do with some equipment and so forth that would simulate work experience in this local area. Um, and, and so what this step would allow us to do is just first go out and seek, um, the ability, request qualifications from architects, the first step, uh, go through that process, outline in higher rise code. Once we go through that process, we'll bring a recommendation to you on the architectural firm, you approve that hopefully, and then we would go and negotiate with them a contract for that service. They're actually going to be the ones who design it, so I can't give you the exact design of it right now because that would be through that process. From there, then, once the design is set and we're ready to move forward with bids, we go out to bid, and the, the goal would be to do this work over the summer of 2026 and have it ready to go forward for the start of the twenty-six, twenty-six school year.
Are we adding square foot to the school or just regrouping?
No, this is just internally within the building, but just redesigning the room plus part of a hallway area.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So when it says expansion, please do not think that that's expanding the building outward. It's just within the area.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item F, transportation contracts. We need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The Shields family to the Toledo School for the Arts, the Jarzabowski family to the Arts, the Boyd family to the Arts, the Cox family to the Arts, and the Myers family to St. Francis V. Sale. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Eversman?
Yes.
Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item G, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donation. The Eversman family for a donation of $200 to the Oregon City Schools, and S and D Capital donated a washer and dryer to the Clay High School Athletics to be used in the stadium. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved with gratitude.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Eversman?
Abstain.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
Item H, disposal of materials. JBL IRX eleven-two BT portable twelve inch speaker with Bluetooth. Uh, I need a motion to dispose of that, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
And disposal, item I, disposal of equipment materials. The items listed in the July fifteenth agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with court policy. Then moving over to the addendum. Consent agenda, of course, has been taken care of under new business. Item J, resolution approving school bus stops for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, whereas Ohio Administrative Code thirty-three oh one eighty-three thirteen states that the superintendent and or his designate must determine annually the location of all school board stops and, whereas the school bus stop locations have been established by the superintendent designate for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education, approval of the list of established school board stop locations, the Oregon City School District, and be it further resolved that a copy of the approved list of school bus stop locations be retained on file in the Oregon Schools Board of Education and the Oregon City Schools Transportation Department. Now you have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? And the roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
And item K, the CRA agreement. We need a motion to approve the amended, amendment to the existing CRA agreement with Neuter, Toledo, and the Devonfall Company. A copy of this agreement has been distributed to the board. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? The roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zawiski?
Yes.
And then we move on to the superintendent.
Thank you. Um, first item, first item, I just want to mention that the CRA agreement that you approved, I just want to remind you that we had spoken about that last one and talked about it, and that was just the, uh, finality of approving that, um, that agreement to extend the beginning part of that agreement with them, which makes sense so that you can get that occupied. I want to talk first about, uh, my superintendent report to the board, uh, as far as my focus areas for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Now being in the school year this last, you know, since beginning last year, um, I've had time to kind of get an understanding of where we're at and where are we going, um, understanding processes that have happened in the district in the past, but also where are we at right now and where can we take those. So what you're going to see is, is a lot about moving forward, and, um, that starts tomorrow morning, uh, with a presentation to the staff, um, in the auditorium here at the high school, uh, where we're going to talk about what I believe student success is all about, which when you, you'll, you'll see my, uh, my math formula that I developed over my thirty-two, no, thirty-one years, now going down to my thirty-second year of educating students, uh, where it talks about academic growth, uh, and when we can take, when we focus on growth of each student versus achievement of each student, because each student is different, but when we focus on that growth, we take them from point A to point B, uh, and move them forward each and every year, um, and we, we try to focus in on building a culture and climate where students feel very secure, they feel safe, but also a culture of hope, uh, where they believe they can be successful. We all know in everything we do, right, uh, the more we feel like we can be successful at something, typically the better off we are in achieving that goal. Uh, and we need to work with our students to develop that hope. That was one of the things that Anthony Wayne, I think, we were very successful in doing, and allowed us to see academic achievement, um, go from when I started there, you know, somewhere around, you know, we talked about performance index, somewhere in the, the district is somewhere around the hundreds, you know, a hundred and ten or so, and we were able to get down into the, uh, top forty consistently every year. We had some buildings, even title buildings, uh, were actually outperforming the top performance score, uh, in their buildings. And so, um, there's a variety of things we're going to try to do moving forward to focus on that hope, but also focus on the personal growth of students and the academic growth of our students, uh, moving forward, and I'll talk more about that tomorrow morning. We also, um, the great news is that we have a treasurer and welcome Tracy, uh, to, to this, this team, um, where we can work on our operational and financial efficiency of the district. My plan is to work with Tracy, the administrative staff, um, our, our help from Golden Gate, to help us look at all expenditures, all of our revenue coming in, make sure that we're coding everything correctly, um, that are based on best practices, but also try to get a firm grip on what does every single employee do in this district and how can we focus on becoming more efficient? Because we know that, um, where, where we're at with federal funding, we know we're at state funding, um, and, and local funding, and we know that right now we're spending more money than we are bringing in, and we have to adjust to that. We have to make some adjustments moving forward, um, with the realization that the state legislature here in Ohio is more than likely going to figure out a way to reduce property taxes, which I understand, but that's negatively going to affect our revenue coming in, uh, moving forward. So we've got to figure out how to become more efficient in what we do moving forward. Also want to work with our, um, Director of Human Resources, and we, and we started to focus on this, especially the intake, when I say intake, the employment of people coming into the district. Um, you know, a human capital plan is necessary to not only, uh, bring people in, uh, and be competitive in doing so, but also once they're here, retaining them, focusing on their well-being, focusing on their financial security, focusing on what can we do to make conditions, um, prime for them to do their jobs moving forward. And then when we have people leave, you know, understanding why that is, but have processes in place so that we can move forward and, and find new people. It's like a cycle, um, of, of human resources. I think the other thing we need to, we need to focus on too is the development of the district facilities master plan. Please know that I'm not asking us to go build new facilities. What this is, is understanding what we have, understanding where we're at with those items, whether it's roof, whether it's carpet, whether it's ceiling tile, everything that we have within buildings and our outside facilities, our athletic facilities, what's the first priority that we need to take care of each year for a five-year outlook? Because we have to have a plan. We have plans set, you know, right now, but we need to integrate those plans together. And, and, um, we have all new kinds of new administrators, um, and personnel in the district, and I think it's important for us to come together, figure this out, make sure that we have the appropriate funding to do what we need to do move forward with those facilities. And then item five, I think this time like no other, um, we have to advocate, um, half of our students, our staff in this community, at both the local, state, and national levels. We know what's going on in Columbus, we know what's going on at the federal level as far as funding, uh, to public schools, and, you know, there's definitely a movement to decrease that funding, and what can we do to adjust to that? But also, you know, I, I think about the cell phone policy that was just approved, and now some more information is coming out about what the interpretation of that policy is, and there's a lot of questions surrounding that because legislators never ask us, right? They never ask what's actually workable in, in a school setting. So, oh, by the way, they can't have them, they can't use them during instructional day, so does that mean we should be taking the phone from their possession like some schools are doing? I would not suggest that because ultimately, oh, by the way, they need to have them accessible during an emergency to contact their parents. So there's, you know, there was not thinking about that, and then some kids are going to have those cell phones, um, in their hands because of medical reasons and other reasons, uh, and other kids are going to see that, so that's going to create those questions. Um, you know, there's other things related to that. Do I think that we need less distractions in the classroom? Yes, but we need to thoroughly think through that and also work with our legislators so that they understand these things and how they have an impact on our daily work moving forward. And even within that, um, you know, I shared with you, I sent a letter to the Oregon City Council in, in relationship to the data centers. I was told by a board member that it made some Facebook posts, um, and, you know, I did that in support of the data center because it allows for diversity of funding coming into the school district. It lessens the taxpayers, uh, the real estate taxpayers' amounts coming in because of some of the fixed levies that we have, and so, um, plus it would add a, a, a large amount of money, and, you know, we're talking several years down the road, um, in a time where we know that decreased funding is coming from the federal and state level. So, um, I understand, uh, the potential impacts of that type of development. Uh, when I was Anthony Wayne, we had a nexus pipeline go through, and, you know, they promised $6 million and, and, uh, new funding to that district, and there was some issues with that initially, um, but they're, they're seeing the benefit of that right now when they have a lot less money than we do. They, they do need that money. So, um, you know, I, I did send a letter in support of that, so I know there's some opposition out there in regards to that, but, um, from our take, it, it would definitely infuse some money to the district that would not be coming from real estate taxes or income tax. Want to mention two other things. First, um, we had a Bullock Rickers request for all grade through, from grade one through grade four, um, uh, information related to their name plus their address. By law, we have to provide that as directory information, it's in higher rise code and so forth, and so we're going to do that. That's to Lifewise. So Lifewise is a religious instruction provider, um, and so the state legislature approved a law, uh, roughly a year and a half ago or so, I can't remember exact date, uh, that said that students that said that students, with permission of their parents, can be released for religious instruction time during the school day. It's changed a couple of times to narrow it down into students can be released one time, at minimum one time per week for that instruction. And so one of the providers that has come out of Columbus to do this, and pretty much the only one in, and it's a very large organization, is Lifewise. Lifewise is not an Oregon City Schools program. They're a separate entity, like we have with Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, any community group that would develop, a church group, things like that. It's not, while some of the literature that may go out, it may say it's a Lifewise program for Oregon City Schools, is not a Lifewise program, or is not an Oregon City Schools program. And so, we're going to be looking at how can we communicate this out to our parents, especially into the community. It's not that we're in opposition. They have free rein to do what they're doing per the state legislature, and obviously the parents have to agree to allow their students to attend that program during recess of lunch. And primarily, they're looking at doing this right now in third grade during lunch and recess at our three elementary buildings. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to share that with you that we had that public records request for that information. I'm assuming they're going to be sending literature to all the families in regards to their programming that would be available to those parents to make that decision. And that's all I have. Oh, no, I apologize, one more thing. I want to thank all of our staff, especially our cleaning crews and custodians for the work that they did over the summer to get the buildings ready to go. We're excited about where they're at. We still have a little bit of work to go as we finalize things for the, you know, all the students to be here. But they did a fabulous job. The operations department is doing a great job. You know, our teachers going to the classrooms, getting ready, to our administrators working with them to get the buildings ready and get everything ready to go. I can't thank everybody enough. This team is doing a great job in getting prepared for the beginning of the school year. So I want to make sure to thank them. And that's all I have at this time unless you have questions.
Any further questions for Dr. Fritz? Okay, hearing that, we'll move to old business. Policies, the following policies were presented for their first reading in July and are now being recommended for adoption. IGVLA, Promote Parental Involvement. JECE, Student Withdrawal from School. JED, Student Absences and Excuses. JEDA, Truancy, and JFCJ, Weapons in School. Now you have a motion for Dr. Fritz's policies, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call. Savig?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Eversman?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Zabisky?
Yes.
Okay, board discussion. Well, I have tennis and golf is being underway. Volleyball starts the 19th, and that first game is at Northview. Soccer starts the 15th. The girls play Southview here and the boys play Southview there. First football away game is Friday, the 22nd, at Wappa Caneta. The first home game is Southview on the 29th. And as Dr. Fritz said, the teachers and staff open house, opening. Opening day is tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., and there will be an open house for the new addition at the Ag Building on Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00, dedication at 5:00 o'clock. Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Kel, real quick?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick moment on behalf of Mercy Health, Cleveland, thank Dr. Fritz and Mrs. Strach for, again, the continued use of Mercy to use the Facets Auditorium to do our talent show, do the second annual. Cleveland's got talent for Mercy. We had 10 Mercy Acts formed. We raised, we doubled what we did last year, about $15,000 that went to the care for our homes, to those people who have rough times at home and stuff that we can give. So a lot of that money went directly in that fund because of, I'll say, the low cost of using that facility, which is just excellent with the sound, the lights, and everything like that. Part of that was, we extended Saint Charles School Supply Collection Program into that, so we started, we started that drive, and I'll begin with Dr. Fritz, probably after the holidays, to get that into the schools. The link to the talent show is highly guarded because towards the end is a five-minute clip of me singing a couple verses of creeds unwidowed and just to demonstrate the talent of some of the people that are on stage. So if you get it, you're in for a treat, but you're better off not listening to it. But seriously, thank you. We had Mrs. Strach came, he was there on site. We welcomed him up on stage and thanked him personally on behalf of Oregon City Schools. So we appreciate the partnership.
And I understand that it doubled despite the emceeing?
Despite that, yeah.
Despite that, it's not a question.
Thank you, Mr. Zabisky.
Before we go into executive session, before we go into executive session, I want to go back to the superintendent report real quick. I have the, once we hire somebody, I have the ability to transfer them into a certain position.
Jim Michael?
Yeah, it's okay. Once we hire somebody, I have the ability to transfer them into certain positions and so forth. But I think it would be cleaner if, in this case, with the list of, on the addendum, that we actually, we asked the board to approve that, those items that are listed there for those adjustments in salary of the following people, just so that it's clean at this point. We'll have further discussion in the future about what we want to do with superintendent report. That's okay with you?
Okay, so we need a motion?
Yes, please.